All right, with that, let's go ahead and call the meeting into order. Call the roll, please.
Jennifer Harden.
Here.
Linda Grassi.
Here.
Tom Hack.
Unmute yourself, Tom.
Sorry, here.
Lori Korniski.
Here.
Jack Miley.
Here.
Okay. Then we go ahead and do the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On behalf of the board, I would like to welcome all students, staff, parents, and interested community members to tonight's Board of Education meeting. I would like to remind everyone that this is a meeting of the Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public comment during the meeting in the public participation section on the agenda. Can every board member, everyone can hear?
Yes.
We can see everybody? We don't know how to unmute ourselves and such.
I don't see Lori, but that's fine. Oh, wait a minute, maybe she's down here.
I see her under, she's right, yeah, she's there, I see her.
Okay, I flipped to where now you all look like you're in that game.
The giant Hollywood Squares now. All right. I recently signed amended substitute House Bill 197 to law. This new law is a response to the health risks associated with the coronavirus outbreak. Among other things, this new law allows public bodies such as boards of education to conduct their meetings using telephone conference, video conference, or other similar technologies. This law became effective on March 27, 2020. Riverside Board of Education is committed to the health, safety, and welfare of our students and their parents, our staff, and our community in general. But even in these times, the board needs to take certain actions to keep the district operational now and fully functional in the future. For these reasons, the board will forward a go in in-person meeting tonight to avoid a gathering of our community members, will conduct this meeting by video conference, and will livestream this video conference meeting to the public in accordance with this new law. If a member of the public wishes to submit a question or a comment for consideration as part of the public participation section of the meeting, please use either the raise hand function or chat feature in Zoom. We will ask all public viewers to disable their camera and mute their microphone during the meeting except for the designated public participation section on the agenda. The Board of Education will suspend portions of certain bylaws which are not consistent with amended substitute House Bill 197. This will ensure compliance to amended substitute House Bill 197. At a later date, the Board of Education will decide whether any of its future meetings will occur via Zoom or other means based on information available at that time. Thank you for your time, consideration, and patience during this difficult time, and thank you to our entire administration, teaching, and non-teaching staff for all their hard work during this difficult time. On the recommendation of the superintendent of schools and in light of provisions set forth in amended substitute House Bill 197, signed by Governor Mike DeWine on March 27, 2020, permitting electronic meetings of public bodies in Ohio, the Riverside Local School District Board of Education hereby a suspends operation of bylaws 0100s, definition of voting, and bylaws 0166 and 0167 to the extent that they require a board member's physical presence at a meeting to vote, and bylaws 0162 to the extent that it requires physical presence for the purpose of a quorum, b determines that this suspension shall take effect immediately to cover the entirety of the meeting from commencement to adjournment. Action taken in this resolution, all action taken during this meeting prior to the passage of this resolution, c finds that there are compelling reasons to adopt the suspension, and d directs that all other portions of bylaws 0100, 0162, 0166, and 0167 shall remain in effect in full force and effect. I'm going to make a motion to approve that if I can have a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Grassi, and if we can, please call the roll.
Lori Korniski.
Hi.
Jack Miley.
Hi.
Jennifer Harden.
Hi.
Linda Grassi.
Hi.
Tom Hack.
Hi.
Motion carried. We'll make a motion to approve the March 31, 2020 board minutes if I could have a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hack. There is no discussion. We can call the roll, please.
Jack Miley.
Hi.
Jennifer Harden.
Hi.
Linda Grassi.
Hi.
Tom Hack.
Hi.
Lori Korniski.
Hi.
Motion carried. That takes us first to special reports.
We do not have any special reports tonight.
All right. Next up is old business, if anybody has anything. So I would like to bring up an old business. I know we had been discussing the timing of the next bond issue, and we do need to have a discussion about if we wanted to, we have already been talking about putting that issue on the ballot in November 2020. I feel like in light of everything going on, that probably is, that is definitely not something that I feel would be in our best interest, but I definitely wanted to kind of hear from everybody else on what you're thinking.
I would agree. I don't think the time is right, and you know, Marcus being what they're being, and people being in the binds and having absolutely no idea when we're going to get back to regular business, I don't think that's the appropriate time either, unfortunately for us, but it is what it is.
I would also agree, just the wrong time.
Mr. Miley, Mr. Hack.
I concur.
I agree also.
All right, that was fairly simple. So we will, um, once we kind of get our bearings again, and certainly tonight, obviously, there is a, the joint financing district lobby, election results should come out, hopefully, we should know soon. So once we kind of know what's going on here in the future, we'll certainly reconvene and talk about the bond issue for the high school after that. Is there any other old business? Okay, then how about new business? Does anybody have anything?
Yes, I do. Yes.
Yep.
I'm going to take my three minutes and then tell you what I'd like to do. I've, um, I've been getting some emails and phone calls about the grading policy that's out there, and at one point, I thought we were going to talk about it, then I found out that there was a board policy 5421 that, basically gave the power of making that decision to the superintendent. As the curriculum chairperson on the curriculum committee, I think this is a very important issue that was never brought up to the curriculum committee at all, and I think that there's enough input that we should have at least heard about it and discussed it. So what I'd like to do is to request a change to the agenda. I tried to do that on an easy method, but that didn't work out, so now I'm requesting on the five board members for a second to revoke policy 5421, so we can discuss the grading policies and give that power back to the Board of Education.
What is, what is it you're asking? Are you asking that we change the agenda?
Yes, and add, to revoke 5421 and to add a discussion and a vote on the grading policy. Because it's an important policy that needs to, in my opinion, it needs to have our stamp of approval. So I'm looking for a second.
So this is Tom. I am aware of the issues, and I do think it's worth our while to have a discussion, so I will second that.
Thank you, Tom. So Gary, we need some guidance.
Okay, well, at this point, so there is a motion to revoke policy 5421 and have a discussion regarding that. We could just have that discussion now and maybe come to a consensus before we vote on revoking that policy, or we can go ahead and vote on it and then have that discussion and add a different resolution at a later time.
I'm all right with discussing it now. It's up to the other four.
So, I mean, I, I fully just support a discussion, but my, I will say openly that I have believed that we hire a superintendent, we hire a director of curriculum, and we put these people in place because they are the experts. We're not as board members, and I fully support our administration's decision. I mean, I've got three kids in the district, I've got two kids at the campus, I understand that it's not, doesn't feel maybe fair to everyone, but I think it believes it's in the best interest of all students, and that's what we're tasked with doing, but my bigger thing is that we task the people that are the experts to make these decisions, and that's not us. So I fully support Dr. Malakar and Dr. Kalis's decision to do this and would not be in favor at all of learning our.
I'm sure their intentions were totally working for the betterment of all the students, but I also feel that I have a point of view that is the main reason that I spent 35 years in education and part of the Riverside community since 1992. And being a retired educator and a person who strived to get excellence for all students, regardless of social makeups or disabilities, we always worked in my buildings to, to do the best for kids. I think we need to discuss this policy, and if it's something that we don't like, like Tom seconded, I'd like to vote it out tonight.
I don't care one way or the other whether or not you want to put it on as an agenda item or whatever, but I fully support our administration and the decisions that they have made. They, I imagine that they have not made these decisions lightly. They've gone through this as a team approach, just because we haven't been part of the day-to-day team. It's not our job as board members to do that. I fully support what they have done. Being in a, being in an industry in the same, in the same line that, that we are daily, daily at my office, you know, dealing with things that come up from this crisis and whatever, and we have to adapt really, really quickly. I don't see that we have done a disservice to the district. I think we're trying to move forward quickly and make sure everyone is taken into account, so I fully, I support our administrators and their decisions and.
I support our administration, but what I don't support is taking one child behind when we can easily make some accommodations like we want to make with the kids that are going to be struggling, which I've watched on videos. We can do the same for the kids that are trying to do their best, and I think that's, that's why we're in the business, and.
And I, I think that's a great conversation to have for, for the fall, you know, because who knows what's going to happen in the fall? Whether we're not going, whether we're going to be back in school under normal circumstances, whether we're not, and those, those are conversations that we could probably have at that point with so many districts doing so many different things, and colleges and universities doing so many different things. I don't think, I don't think anybody is in a position to, to, it's not going to matter at the end of the day, right now.
It will matter because this is a good period of time, which even like this is an example, that everybody needs to be fluid, and every decision can be adjusted. Robert Hunt, the superintendent in Chagrin Falls, said that he didn't want to in, I'll read it to you. To avoid hurting student athletes and people that are trying to get scholarships. He, um, he is requiring his high school to give grades. I'm not really saying that. The part that I don't like is that I think juniors and seniors, because it's so critical in the timing of their lives, should have the option to choose grades or to choose pass/fail. I'm not, I'm fine with the younger kids up to that point because honestly, there's a lot of time for them to, to do more service work and to meet the new requirements of colleges and things like that. But juniors and seniors for scholarships need GPAs. For attendance to some very high academic programs, they need GPAs. I, I even suspect that that's the same for if they want to go to a military academy. So with those thoughts in mind, I really believe that our juniors and seniors who want to excel should have a choice, and that's why I'm bringing this all up.
Well, what you're trying to do right now is amend a board policy, so then where does it stop? You're saying that we want to take away the power of our superintendent or administration to make the decisions that we task them with, and then instead start having us manage things that aren't ours to manage? Because you're not talking about just amending what it is. You're not trying to amend one thing, you're amending an entire policy as a result.
No, 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 I'm amending juniors and seniors because.
You're amending, you're proposing to amend an entire policy that we had from Neola that you approved.
Right, and, and also, we never digested those policies to this extent. This is a very important.
Some people did, some board members did.
Name one.
You also had the chance. We, we, we got emails about this, and some of us did actually participate in a back-and-forth about this.
Right, on, on Thursday evening, and then it went.
No, it was a whole day Thursday. It was, no.
Yeah, at noon, at noon, I wrote it all out.
Some of us responded as soon as we got it, called people, made questions, and, yeah.
Um, I, I just, I have an issue with, you know, proposing change to board policy so that we can change one thing individually.
Right.
We have a board policy committee that reads board policy to great, to great degree, sometimes to, you know, I don't even know how to phrase that. I'm laughing, much to the chagrin of our administrators who have to sit through my policy meetings. I get it, but some of us read those board policies with this kind of interpretation in mind, what happens if? And, and those of you who have sat through those policy meetings will attest to the fact that that's exactly the kinds of questions that, that come up in those meetings, and we have those conversations, and when the policy committee says we recommend these policies and the rest of the board approves them after two readings, you have the opportunity to read them. You have the opportunity to read through the information that has been provided after we have gone through the policy meetings. I, I, I am not a proponent of changing board policy because we don't like a decision that the, that the administration may have, have made.
I don't like leaving kids behind.
I, I don't feel that that's somewhere that this board should go to when we have already set the policies because we've, we've read them.
Well, and, and I'm, the only thing I'm going to say is this, we all have different committees we're on. So if I didn't read that policy to know exactly that this was coming down the pipe when the, when the virus was going to take over the country, I'm sorry, but, like I said, fluidity is the most important thing right now, and the second most important thing, and probably the most important thing for us, is to do what's right for all kids. That's my point.
Were we assuming then that Dr. Malakar and Dr. Kalis did make a decision that was best for all kids? Is that what you're suggesting?
I'm suggesting that we should give juniors and seniors choice. Kids that are, kids are working for a GPA, kids that are trying to get scholarships, kids that are doing what we ask all kids to do at Riverside.
Okay, so let me jump in just, just for a moment, and this, this may be a very liberal view of discussion. I, I mean, although I'm inclined to support what has been done, there are perhaps many people who are tuning into this session who may not be fully versed. I know there was an email sent out to the community, you know, to the Riverside community, but there may be other people outside who do not have kids at Riverside who are probably hearing this for the first time, so what I would like to do is ask Dr. Kalis and Dr. Malakar to give an overview of what they were, what they have done regarding the grading in this unique coronavirus era, and in that way, at least people who are watching this will have a better understanding of what is, what is in place.
I can start. You know, Dr. Malakar and a group of teachers were given the task to develop a program, a grading program, to take us through this COVID-19 hiatus. And some of our concerns were that, you know, our teachers and our students aren't accustomed to this type of learning platform. Students were home all the time. We have a larger district, and there are a lot of distractions at home. We found early on in the process that many students didn't have internet access, and there are other types of situations going on at home. We always say that sometimes the only routine a child gets is when they're at school, and when they're not at school, and we can't keep an eye on them, there are some times where kids will fall through the cracks. We wanted to level the playing field. We knew that if we had remote learning, we didn't have any oversight about who is completing the assignments or the grades. We also thought that there's some questions of validity because of that. There are some students that may have been middle-of-the-road students, but now getting straight A's because we don't know how they're completing that work. We didn't want to also jeopardize any of the kids that are academically engaged because of some type of glitch or problem that they might have had using the platform. We didn't want to hurt their grade point either, so we thought that, you know, going to a pass incomplete scale would be fair to, to everybody. I do know that there were other districts in our area that were thinking about it, but the majority chose to go a, do the regular grade scale, and that scared a lot of districts into conforming. We do know that there were a lot of school districts in the Columbus area that were going to the pass and incomplete as well. But, you know, one of our major concerns when we're talking about the well-being of children is trying to support their social, emotional needs as well. We're not there for them, and we just wanted to make sure that, you know, they're not being left behind that way. And inasmuch as what has been discussed so far about not knowing, the emails went out. You know, I'm hearing about it now from, from Mr. Miley. I didn't, we sent that, those emails out at the end of last week. I had a parent call me and tell me that there was someone that said that they didn't know about it. Well, my suggestion is check their email. I, I mean, that's where some of the information goes. It's electronic, and, you know, I, I just want to make sure that, you know, it's not a glitch with the email either because we know that it's happening with some of our kids now. Um, just, just a couple other things too, is the question is whether or not a student can ask for a grade. Well, with everything that's going on and all the struggles that we have with this, and in all the responsibilities and duties of our counselors, it would be impractical to do, to allow them to, to ask for their grades. What, I mean, what do you do? Do you, do you allow them to pick all their grades, or they, or do they cherry pick what classes they want? It's just, it's so ambiguous. At this point, it's very difficult to control. We figure by doing the pass and incomplete, it holds all the students harmless. I don't know, Melissa, if you want to add what, what you know, I mean, that's, those are my thoughts off the top of my head. I can pull some of my notes and probably go into this a little bit more deeply.
I have all your notes right here.
I was, I was, all right.
So I, I can just reiterate what Jim said. First of all, this wasn't a decision that I made by myself in case there's any confusion about that. It wasn't one person's opinion. It was a committee of people, including teachers and other administrators in the district, that we then ran past Jim. We did multiple, we're one of the last districts to get this policy out. I've been chomping at the bit for about a week and a half trying to get it done, and we kept going back and forth trying to figure out what would be the best for the majority of our students. It doesn't matter what course of action we took, it was not going to be the best decision for all of our students. So we did the best that we could. We had, again, we had teachers, we had administrators across the board. Quite honestly, elementary, people don't really care about it because it's not impactful. So it was Pete was the high school administrator, was in on the conversations, ran it past several groups of high school teachers, getting some input and kind of tweaking the plan from there. So it was definitely a committee kind of team effort to get the policy in place. We felt strongly that as an administrative team that all kids should be, things should be the same for all students rather than allowing a picking and choosing kind of cherry picking thing. So that's, that's how we came to the decision. I could give you a scenario for every single situation that you're going to throw out, so.
I, I read, I read your seven points.
One of the things that is always sensitive to students also is class rank and the race a lot of times for valedictorian and salutatorian too, and again, yes, it doesn't, the, the grades you receive as a junior and the first semester of your senior year do count towards that. And again, we don't have oversight over it. I don't know who's doing the work at, at, at home. I don't know if, you know, everyone's being legitimate in terms of taking tests or taking exams. We don't know that, and that's why, another reason is, we went to the pass incomplete again to hold everyone harmless.
Am I, can I finish what I was going to say, just quickly?
Please.
There's, in addition to a range of, of student issues, there's also the flip side of that, where as the educator, as the people providing the education, we built this from the ground up, and I can't ensure that every single teacher is providing the level of education that every student needs to be successful. So now let's flip it. Let's flip it from, I don't know what's going on at home, and there's wonderful things going on in some homes and not-so-wonderful things going on in other homes. I also have to be cognizant as the employer of teachers of their home situation, about what they're capable of doing. When this all started, that was something that was imposed on us as the employer, so we're trying to balance that out. What is to say a student who gets a B in a class right now doesn't come back and say, "The reason I got a B is because you didn't teach me"? I don't have an argument for that. I can't, I can't defend that. They may very well be right. There might actually be a glitch in the internet connection of the teacher, and the, the instruction is not where it should be. I can't guarantee that right now. So to say that any of these grades, fourth, nine weeks, are valid, I would argue that they are not for a variety of reasons. And so that is why we made the decision and why the information went out, to, to go to a pass or an incomplete, to put everything on hold. What we are going to do, now I will say, to speak to Jack's concern about fluidity, I would agree. I have fielded, I will say, a very small number out of, out of 4,200 kids to have answered maybe six or seven emails and, and maybe the other five or six that I wasn't in on that have been forwarded to me from various assorted board members, so that I am in the loop and know what the conversations are, even seen some neighborhood posts, things like that. What I will say in response to that, that I think that we should do, and I talked to Dr. Kalis about this today, at the end of the fourth nine weeks, we will print out every student's grade report with a percentage that shows their third quarter percentage and shows their fourth quarter percentage. We will put those grade reports in the permanent files. If indeed a student runs into an issue applying to college or applying for scholarships and needs some backup or some support from the district, we will be happy to issue a letter along with that documentation of what their grades would have been. So that is, that in response to being fluid, Jack, and to being responsive to people's concerns at that end of, of the continuum of our higher achieving students, that's what I think that we can do to help support them moving forward. But I got to tell you, I, I believe, and, and nobody likes this answer, nobody likes to say, "I don't know." I don't know. None of us know what's going to happen moving forward, but anybody who is either in college or applying to college is in the exact same situation. So, so, and, and so, not knowing, that's the reality. Nobody knows. I don't know if my kid's financial aid is going to be next year, who is already in college, because he's not going to get an accurate GPA this semester. So that, that is where we're at.
Yeah, and my daughter that's in college is, she gets the option.
Right.
They're letting, Cincinnati's letting the student choose after the grades are in, which one they want, the P or the grade.
How is that a veil of GPA, Jack?
I'm just telling you.
How is that?
They did that because of the Corona. Everybody's trying something different.
Right.
I'm agreeing with you. I'm just saying that that's, that's what's happening there.
I know, I agree, and I have a kid in college. I know, the same thing is happening. We don't have the resources to have a counselor touch 1,800 grades. We don't have the resources to have a counselor touch 1,800 grades, which is essentially.
I'm saying whoever, whoever asks.
It could potentially be. It could be.
Who grades are 1,800?
300 kids at six classes per kid.
Okay, but I'm saying juniors and seniors. That's what I'm talking about.
Well, again, that, why, so that's why we made the decision that we did. I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood it was a team decision and a little bit of understanding what our thought process was behind it.
I would have liked to have been part of it with the curriculum committee, and I'm sure Tom would have liked to be.
If we would have had time, Jack, I certainly would have done that, but I thought in sending an email.
Well, I thought on April 16th, when we had our building on grounds, you kind of told us there's nothing really pending between now and today.
I apologize that this, the coronavirus has moved so fast and furious that I have not been able to get committee meetings together with what I have, what I've been doing. I sincerely apologize for that. So I will, I will own that and take on the responsibility of not calling a curriculum committee meeting with the 10 to 12 hours I am working a day almost every day to make sure that I stay up and running. I'm sorry.
Okay.
So what we're hearing is that we have an option for our students to still get, to see their grades if it becomes necessary. The question right now, though, is that are we willing to change on the fly board policy? Because that's what you're asking right now. And I don't think that changing board policy right now is what we should be doing, especially changing something as significant as taking away the power of our superintendent and our administrators for making the decisions they need to make.
Well, this was the only way I could get a discussion going about this, so.
We could have discussed it in any kind of way. It doesn't require removing a board policy.
But that policy needs to be adapted. So we have to go with it.
This isn't the sound, soundcraft, but if you revoke the policy and put the decision in the hands of the board, actually, that washes my hands of it. Board tells me what they want to do, and I'll do it. You know, is that, is that what we want to do?
So let me, so let me just suggest this. I think we've had a lot of discussion amongst the board members. We haven't heard from everyone. I'm not sure we've heard from Lori exactly, but we've heard a lot from Dr. Kales and Dr. Malacher. My personal opinion is, I don't know that this is going, any further discussion is going to change anyone's mind. And we've got a motion on the floor, it's been seconded, and I think we should move forward with the voting.
Mrs. Krenisky, did you want to add anything first?
So I've had a lot of, I've been involved in all the emails and the back and forth, and to be totally honest upfront, I was a little nervous about moving to a pass incomplete also, based on what's going on in my household. But after reading and understanding kind of how the decision was made and all the inputs into it, I again do support the decision that was made. I think it's unfortunate of all the timing, and as said, I think, I wish we would have had more discussion about it, but unfortunately, we did. And again, at the end of the day, I did support the decision that was made. I also think it kind of sounds, you know, just again, because we do not like the decision that was made, I think it's bad to go and change board policy simply just because we disagreed with the decision. I think that sets a precedent that's very dangerous and a very slippery slope.
I would fully agree with that. All right, with that said, then, we have a motion on the floor, and there's no more discussion, then let's call the roll on if we want to amend the policy.
Okay, and then I know we do have public comment later on the agenda, and I believe there will be some public comments, so we can certainly revisit during the curriculum portion.
Right, but there is no public participation at this point in the meeting.
I just wanted to blank that out, so. All right, so I have motion to revoke policy, board policy 5421, and to have the discussion regarding the grading policy. And Mr. Miley motions, Mr. Heck second. Do you want me to go ahead and call the roll?
Yes, please.
Okay. Jennifer Harden?
Nay.
Linda Grassi?
Nay.
Tom Heck?
Nay.
Lori Krenisky?
Nay.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Motion failed. Is there anything else we have for our new business? If not, then it takes us to the Board of Education Committee and liaison reports. The first thing is the superintendent's business advisory. There has been nothing that we have done with that since the start of all this. Mr. Miley, curriculum programming boosters?
No boosters meeting because of the virus and no curriculum meeting at this month. We will have one next month.
Thank you. Finance, audit, personnel, legislative, Mrs. Grassi?
Yes, so we had a finance and personnel committee, Gary, I don't remember the date because I don't have it written down, but we had one, and we talked about the majority of the finance issues that are on the agenda here. We talked about waiving the preschool fees for the remainder of the year and giving refunds. So that, that was a conversation that we had, and the ultimate resolution of that was that the refunds will be in accordance with Gary's recommendations that are on the board agenda. We talked about the administrative handbooks, which I see are on the agenda as separate items now. They were originally on the, on the agenda as part of the personnel committee agenda items, but now they're separate. But we talked about the updates that were being made to those. We talked about mileage forms that were being hooked into Google so that we could, so that when employees ask for mileage reimbursements, their mapping would be done via Google. We also talked about raising the capital asset threshold, which I believe is on the finance committee agenda. We talked about crumbly purchases. I took the notes this time. We talked about waiving credit card fees for the remainder of the year, which is also on our board agenda this evening. We talked about the release of the audit, which I don't think is on this agenda for tonight's board meeting, but we did discuss the fact that the audit for the district was completed, correct?
Yeah, the audit was completed and released on the, our state website sometime in the last couple of weeks.
So that's done, and we talked about, for personnel issues, we did talk about the fact that the EVLs are still going to be taking place in, in the same but a different type of format, because classes are now online, and so those are the things that we talked about. And legislatively, shoot, there's just so much going on legislatively right now that if people aren't reading the news and whatever, and I can't go over all of them, there are so many things going on, so. So I have.
All right. Buildings and grounds operations alumni, Mr. Heck?
Sure. There was no alumni meeting because of the coronavirus situation. We did have a buildings and grounds committee meeting on the 16th. We covered quite a bit of territory. Kind of the short of it, long and the short of it, is that many of you are probably aware of the crumbling concrete at both Parkside and at Riverview. So we agreed that there were going to be a total of four, I believe, four cores taken, two bad cores, you know, cores of bad concrete at Parkside, and one good. Parkside is worse than Riverview, but Riverview also has some issues. And then one core of the bad concrete at Riverview. At the time that we had the meeting on the 16th, that, that work has not been done, so let me just see if there's an update relative to the cores, just so we're all aware of where that stands. Now, I guess I'll look to Mr. Weiner, you might be.
I have, I have an update during my superintendent's meeting. It's not much of an update, but it's an update.
Okay, terrific, and we'll table that for, for that time. There's still a few things that we are trying to get in place with regard to, you know, we assume the responsibility for both of the new schools as of August, and so there are still a couple of things that need to be done. I know that there's work in fact on tonight's agenda. We're gonna, there's a couple of changes to allow for the kilns to be installed at both of the schools. So that is moving forward. We talked a little bit about the summer workers and talked about social distancing, but we're getting ready to move forward with that. And the applicants, I think, are at the end of April. And then we also spent some time talking about, you know, what it is with some of the, some of the legacy schools, kind of what the biggest issues are. And so we've kind of collected a list, and we're, we're looking at what it might cost to, to do some of the, some of that work, just so we understand what the scope and potential cost of that would be. And then finally, in previous meetings, I have talked about all the good work that's being done with the collaboration between Kirtland, Paintsville City, and Perry about some vocational-type training. Our portion of that is focused on welding, and I know that we needed to put some time and effort into the, improving the shop facilities at Riverside, shop facilities at Riverside, and TDA has done some work along those lines on, you know, various things that needed to happen. Dr. Malacher, I know that you are, you know, eyeballs deep in alligators, but did you have any further updates about what TDA is doing? And you're on mute.
I know, I know, there. We are doing a weekly meeting with them, but there's, they're still moving along. So there's not really anything else to report at this time. They're still gathering their information. As soon as we have a full report from them, I'll bring it either, probably to the curriculum committee first, and then we'll bring it to the board.
Okay, terrific. And Jack, did I miss anything?
No, you're good.
Thank you. That's the end of my report. Thank you.
All right, that takes us next to policy and strategic plan, Mrs. Krenisky.
So we did meet as a policy committee on April 9 to finish reviewing and making edits to the first that are currently on the agenda for tonight. And we do know that there's a second set of policies coming through that we need to set up some time to start reviewing after we get the first reading, so we'll be setting up more time. There hasn't been any, any meeting for strategic plan late right now.
Thank you very much. That takes us to the superintendent's report, Dr. Kales.
Thank you, Mrs. Harden. I have an update for the board in terms of what we might do for graduation, and I say might because it's just another directive or another suggestion out of the governor's office that conflicts with something that was said just a few days earlier. Let me start by saying we got together with Jamie McIntyre, and I know Stacy Lucas, and also Mrs. Brazuti, Melissa Malacher, myself, Nick Carabine, there are a lot of people involved in the discussion of what we would like to do in lieu of a traditional commencement exercise for our students. Again, it's a very challenging time. We want to be able to give our students a commencement and also a prom, and that is one of the reasons why, over the course of a couple of months, we keep on getting alternative dates, just in case we need them. So we're doing our footwork in every respect, but since then now, it appears that, it appears that, you know, school is not going to be back in session by the end of the regular school year. So we have to think of creative ways in order to provide some of these events for our students. So the OD and also the governor's office is suggesting that schools do virtual graduations. Now, we thought of a couple of different ways of doing this, and we came up with one, which seems, again, to be the more common way that a lot of schools are planning this event. So tentatively, right now, we have a senior Zoom meeting scheduled for May 8th, between 11, there's one session at 11:00 a.m. and one at 3:00 p.m. And the reason why there's two sections is that we only have a Zoom platform that can hold up to 300 students. Right now, we have 344 kids that are potential graduates, and if they all get online, we won't have enough. So we have two different sessions. In the Zoom meeting, we'll review content in the form of the guidance information that we're going to be giving to the students, and part of this guidance includes what we're going to do and how we're going to distribute caps and gowns. So tentatively, we have a senior drive-through scheduled for May 14th and May 15th. May 14th between 4:00 and 6:30, and May 15th between 9:00 and 11:30. And at this drive-through, the kids are going to put their names on the windshields, they're coming through as we do in arrival and dismissal at the campus, and we're going to be there distributing caps and gowns, castles, any types of awards like number-one club, diploma covers, any senior wear that they may have ordered, and also a 2020 graduation sign that we purchased for the students. So again, that's going to be two different dates for those tasks. Graduation ceremony content is the next item. We're asking students to provide us with their pronunciation of their names, also providing photos for a virtual slideshow, which include baby photos, our current photo of the graduate, and also a 10-second video of a personalized diploma presentation that of their choosing, so long as it's appropriate. And we're going to put this all together and have a virtual graduation. We're also asking them to, they want to include them throwing the cap or they're tuning their task, and we're also asking that if they decide that they want to decorate their caps, that they can take a picture of those as well, and we can add that on to the virtual graduation. The virtual graduation ceremony is tentatively scheduled on our second alternative date for graduation, which would be June 14th. And that's where we are with this right now. The issue we're having is, obviously, we wanted the board to know about what some of the plans are, and just today, we found that one school district is doing something a little bit different than a virtual graduation. They're, they're looking at having students walk into the auditoriums with their parents and get a diploma and walk out and have, I guess, what would count to a somewhat of a constant flow of graduates. And the quotes from an article that came out actually today, Governor Dewine says, "As far as I'm concerned, if a school can do distancing, if they could figure it out how to do that, you know, they could, they can certainly do graduation." Again, that's different than what we heard just a few days ago. Then he goes on to say, it says, "Dewine added that the decision about whether or not to allow schools to hold in-person graduation would be driven by a lot of different things, including the number of students participating in the ceremony and the size of the facility it's held at. He indicated that schools with large graduating classes probably can't do it very well or can't do it." So the question is, you know, we're feeling kind of, I'm feeling uncomfortable sending this out tomorrow. I want to find out, talk to other school districts if they're going to still go ahead with their virtual graduations. I would like to as well, with the idea that maybe down the line, if things really clear up and surprise us all, maybe we can do something in the summer and throw it together. But at this point, we owe the students, we owe the students this, and I'm thinking we ought to go ahead with it, at least for the time being, and, you know, we'll give them at least what we can. Do you have any questions on that at all?
So Dr. Kales, I'm not sure, I, so I know that the 14th of June is the, is the date we're shooting for, and obviously, there's, there's not a whole lot of clarity coming from the governor's office, but can you just repeat again what, what our current plan is, knowing that it is subject to plan?
Our current plan is, we're getting some pictures and video clips from our students, and we're compiling them together so we can have a virtual graduation on the 14th. Now, the 14th would start at 2:00, like it typically does for commencement, and we would stream it for the kids to watch and the parents to watch, and a day later, I think we will make it available also for the parents as well to have it as a possible keepsake as well. So that's what we're planning on doing. It's what most districts are doing around here right now. I talked to a few of my cohorts throughout the area, my colleagues.
Okay.
We would still have speakers, the salutatorians and, or valedictorian and salutatorian would provide other speeches, same with Mr. Leatios, myself, and Mrs. Harden as board president.
Would this be a Zoom thing?
No, it's not going to be a Zoom. It's going to be compiled by. No, it's not going to be a Zoom. It's going to be compiled by Mrs. McIntyre and a small staff that she's using right now. And it's going to be virtual.
Okay, so does that mean that it's going to be pre-recorded and then released? I guess I'm still a little...
Yeah, it's going to be recorded, and then we're going to play it at 2:00 on the 14th.
Okay. And through what medium would people be watching it?
Good question. Let me grab my notes.
It would be on the district YouTube page, and then we would also post it on our website, social media. And then, once it's on the internet, it will be there forever. I mean, it's not, it's going to air it too and go away. We'll stay, so they can watch it at any time.
Thank you, Nick. There's also a few teachers in our district that are also trying to get letters to every senior. Right now, they compiled about 200 letters. We need a few more. If anyone would like to write one to our seniors, any of our board members were more than willing to accept them. We're also looking at continuing with the senior projects. We still find that if there's interest and value in the senior project, we would like to do that too. Again, it'd have to be a modified event. Maybe we can do it in a virtual manner. Students must complete some of the requirements for that, which include the same as they were before. They have to be on track to graduate, obviously. They have to sign up on a Google form by May 4th. They must be passing all their courses by May 8th. They would be released from their classes, they'll have school beginning on May 11th, and they would continue through to May 21st. And May 21st would be the last day of the seniors, as it was scheduled in our calendar before this COVID issue.
Dr. Kales, that reminds me, you just said that. Has there been a discussion about not going all the way through June for a school year?
There's some discussion, again, amongst areas, superintendents. Again, this whole process is very stressful, and it's straining a lot of families, a lot of parents, and kids, and teachers, and it's not a real great situation. But understand that a lot of these schools started their school year at least a week or two before we did, because we started a little bit later. We start later as it is, by about a week, and then we added another week onto it because we're opening up the two new elementary schools. So we might, if that's the case, we still might go a little bit longer, depending on, you know, how many days we have left in terms of calamity. I'm guessing that's how we would gauge it.
So you're just going to kind of let us know as we get through May?
Yeah. What I heard from the governor's offices is that they would like us to continue through the rest of the year like this. In fact, I think out of the federal government, they want us to consider bringing them back into the schools. And I don't know how we could do that right now. It's impractical. Oh, we had bus, go ahead.
I'm just curious. So have we, you know, I sit and I watch the governor every day, 2:00 o'clock and whatever, and we watch it at work. And have we gotten any indication from them separately or from ODE separately about what they, and I know this is so premature, about what they think fall might look like? And even if we don't know, are we going to be doing planning over the summer just on the contingency basis of what happens if we can't go back to time in the fall?
Right. We're working on schedules right now, preparing for business as usual with the idea that that might not be the case, and that we might have to start again, which, one of the things I wanted to mention too, even with the possibility of this carrying on into the fall, our plan is to also provide some better PD for our teachers so that they might be able to provide more supports for our students. So we feel a lot more comfortable with the way we're delivering the instruction and how kids are receiving it. And at that point, there is a very, very good chance we are going to go back to our regular grading scale.
Right.
Melissa?
So just to, again, to add on to what Dr. Kales said, kind of in that communication that I sent out, is there, there are bullying conversations going on for things that are coming up, you know what I mean, in the most immediate future. So, you know, we kind of got the grading thing under our belt. Now, we're moving on to graduation, which is probably the single biggest thing going on. But we have orientations that we have to deal with. We have, I mean, even something as simple as field day or a fifth grade clapout. All of those things are on our radar. But we have also, we also are planning to be back in session as normal, but we're also doing work to what a hybrid might look like. So that stuff is all happening. You know, those conversations are starting. I have all of our instructional coaches and a couple of the tech team that has been working with teachers already thinking about what it might look like if we had to do things differently. I've put out to teachers, actually in the high school department head meeting today, said, you know, if you've stumbled across something that you really like, a program, online program that you found, put it down on your list of potential things you want to purchase next year, because there may be additional things that we have to look at. You know what I mean? Depending on what we do. So things are happening simultaneously, which inherently makes, I mean, it is what it is. I'm not complaining. It just makes things more difficult as we try to plan for tradition, because there's all those spring things that have to go on, and also make a contingency plan if we have to have some other method of delivering instruction. So a lot of things going on that I will keep, we'll keep that email thread kind of going to make sure that you're, you know or are aware of the conversations that are happening.
Awesome. Never too early to plan, right?
Correct.
We're supposed to have our bus inspections this week, and we were told by the Ohio Highway Patrol that they would do them later. We're still working on them right now. And we do have our mechanics in. They are social distancing as much as they possibly can. Garage is relatively big. The thing is, I just want to make sure that there's not only one mechanic in there. I want a couple in there. I do that for safety reasons. If something should happen, I want someone there to help. So we do have the mechanics in there, and they're getting the buses ready. Earlier this week, we did have a company called REM selling cameras on our buses in the overflow lot. They were supposed to finish today. I did not check to see if they were. Once they're done, we're also disinfecting all the buses that they were on as well. The concrete update, we had three concrete core samples taken at Parkside and one at Riverview on the 21st of April. The cores were sent to Terricon's laboratory in Cincinnati. Petrographic and chloride ion testing analysis is being performed on each core sample by Terricon. Please don't ask me to explain those two tests. I don't know what they are. I think they're just testing for the integrity of the concrete, but I can't get into the scientific aspect of it. I could ask Chris Heasley to provide some of that if need be. As with Chris Heasley's conversation with Terricon this afternoon, their Cincinnati laboratory performing this work has advised us that the test results won't be ready for about two weeks. So that's where we are with that. Nutrition service meal distribution, I just wanted to give the board an idea about how many meals we're distributing to some of our families that need it. The week of April 6th, we distributed Monday and Wednesday, but it was only from Riverview only. We had 291 students, and we delivered 1,746 meals. The week of the 13th, we only distributed meals only Wednesday due to Easter Monday, but we did it at both schools of Riverview and Buckeye. Riverview had 160 students. Buckeye had 101. It was a total of 261 students for a total of 1,364 meals. Now, think about that. We had 1,746. We have 1,364. This week, the week of the 20th, we spiked. We had distribution at both schools. Riverview had 324 students show up. And Buckeye had 101. A total of 261 students, I'm sorry, a total of 520 students for a total of 2,628 meals that were served. This week, we've only served one day, which was Monday. We have tomorrow. We had 264 students, and it was 1,584 meals. Lastly, we're working on a transition plan, going from the company we contracted with over the past few years to working with a shared service model with Kirtland. And we have a meeting tomorrow at 1:30 with John Renwick of Kirtland to discuss what that transition plan might look like and using some timelines that I can share with the board. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. That takes us to the turn for Mr. Placco.
Okay, I have a fairly short report title. I just had a couple of updates for the board. Back on April 10th, the Bureau of Workers' Compensation announced a $1.6 billion dividend back to their employers equal to 100% of 2018 premiums. That check, we should get it from them within the next couple of days, and we're estimated to get back about $230,000 from that rebate. We also closed on the sale of Hill Road, so it's officially owned by the Educational Service Center of the Western Reserve. We've been working together on that to get utilities transferred over, phone lines transferred over, security systems, HVAC systems, boiler systems, all that stuff. We have to disconnect from our systems and get them set up on their own, so we're working through those challenges. But as of April 15th, we no longer own Hill Road Elementary School. The next month is the five-year forecast month. We'll update the forecast. Obviously, it's going to be very challenging this time with, you know, with the circumstances we're under right now. We've been hearing rumors of a mid-biennium state funding cut. We don't know what that is at this point. We don't know how they're going to determine that and how to affect each district. You know, is that going to affect charter school deductions and open enrollment deductions? Is that, you know, how that's going to play out? Because the state budget is funded mostly on income taxes and sales tax. And obviously, there's a lot of unemployed individuals out there, and stores close, obviously a drop in sales tax revenue. So the state has a very, very big deficit that they need to cover. And with education being one of the larger limbs in the budget, it is anticipated that they might make a mid-biennium cut. And then what that looks like in the next biennium, we're not sure. Hopefully, we'll get some guidance soon so we can model what that looks like. But right now, it's just pure speculation. So at this point, you know, if we don't have information by the time I wrap up the forecast, we'll just move forward with the way it's projected as is, knowing that it could change. And then update again once we know more, and then for the official November update. Also been brainstorming what revenue streams and besides, state funding would be decreased going into next school year. For this school year, we'll have a reduction of like preschool fees and paid state fees because we refunded a lot of those. And also, like going into next school year, casino revenue, we get about 220,000 or so in casino revenue each year. Obviously, that's going to drop if the casinos closed. And, but we have some cost savings as well. You know, we're not having nurses in the building. Substitutes are not working right now, and we're not purchasing fuel, so there are some savings. The online instruction piece of it hasn't really cost a whole lot, an additional expenses, because we already had Chromebooks for most students. And so we were able to convert the online instruction at fairly minimal expense at this time. But what that might look like for next school year is to be determined. So hopefully, we'll have more for that, for the five-year forecast update for month of May. And then lastly, today is election day. All of the absentee ballots had been returned to the Board of Elections by 7:30 tonight. They will post the results at midnight, the preliminary result, because ballots that were mailed had to be postmarked yesterday. They have till May 8th to arrive at the Board of Elections. If you have some data on the website, if you go to the Board of Elections website, you go on to the create issues or issues like mailing lists option on the left-hand side. It shows that for absentee data, you know, there's 155,000 or so registered voters in Lake County. Only 49,284 of those registered voters have requested an absentee ballot. And also on their site, they have a day-by-day total that shows how many ballot, how many applications for absentee ballots they process each day, how many ballots they send out each day, and how many they receive each day. So, for example, on April 24th, the Board of Elections received 4,762 ballots. On the 25th, they received 2,300. Yesterday, they received 3,204, and today they have 2,0936. You can see some day-by-day data on that. But we'll just wait for, see what the results are later this evening. And then, you know, if it's a, if it's a close election again, like it was last time, we may not know the final results till around May 8th, when the final deadline cutoff is for the ballots to arrive at the Board of Elections.
Gary, do you know when those ballots, what they're posting tonight, when those were collected through?
I believe it's today, because they did update their website. They actually date stamped it as like 4:02 today. They updated, they showed that they had 2,000 some, 2,900 ballots today. So I'm assuming that they're going to post what they have tonight as part of the results. But obviously, there could be more ballots arriving through the mail, and then if anybody voted provisional ballot, then those will be counted later as well, because if voters who requested a ballot and didn't receive it in time did have the option to go to the Board of Elections and vote in person today, in addition to people who don't have a home address, that's essentially homeless people, or there's certain disabilities, they're allowed to vote in person today. I believe some of that would be in today's results, but provisional ones, I think, are at a later time. But usually, the count on those are pretty, are pretty small. So, you know, if it's a close election, we won't, you know, we won't know the final results. If it's not a close election, then we'll probably have a good idea of where it ends up. So we're just going to wait and see later tonight what that looks like and go forward from there.
Okay, thank you.
At that point, that concludes my report.
All right, thank you very much. That takes us to public participation. Anyone wishing to address the Board of Education will be recognized by the Board President. Speakers are requested to identify themselves and their topic. Comments are limited to three minutes. If you have something, please raise your hand, and Mr. Carabine will unmute you. Once he's done that, please state your name, and then you've got three minutes.
I believe we have R. Wright raising her hand.
My name's Rachel Wright. I will be speaking to the new grading policy. I have a junior at Riverside High School. I am asking for the administration to revise the new policy so that high schoolers have a choice between pass and incomplete or letter grade. I understand everything the administration has said, and I agree because of the different opportunities to learn. They feel pass or incomplete is their best option. What I am saying is that it is fine for elementary and middle school students that don't have GPAs yet, and any high schooler who feels that they are at a disadvantage can take their pass. But the students that are working hard to increase their GPAs for college acceptance and scholarship opportunities should be given the option of a letter grade, especially juniors who have run out of time. One of your arguments is that your new grading policy should be uniform, but we are not uniform with any other district in our area. Mentor's policy I just got today is to bump up everybody's letter grade. If you have an 80%, you get an A. If you have a 50%, you get a C. So these students that are getting these higher GPAs from these bumped upgrades are now competing with our students whose GPAs have been leveled off for the same scholarships and the same college applications. Again, all we are asking for is that the students have a choice to get their letter grade and what they deserve. This can be very simply implemented by adding a box in the dropdown menu on Infinite Campus to choose pass or incomplete or letter grade. Guidance counselors would have nothing to do with this, no extra time involved. It would be the teachers doing what they normally do by giving out the grades that the kids deserve. This would cost, could cost families in the district thousands of dollars in possible scholarship money and could affect their acceptance to certain colleges. This is affecting opportunities some kids have worked their whole academic careers for. Keep in mind, this is a small number of students that are going to choose this option, and it is not too much to ask to go that extra step for them. Please do the right thing.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Is Emma?
Ball has 33.
My F and ball is 33, your name and the numbers.
Oh, God, I'm frozen.
Frozen.
What we said was exactly what I'm, pardon me.
Can we hear Emma?
I, I can't hear anything.
I cannot.
And Melissa's frozen.
She is frozen, the mouth open.
Hey Nick, you want to try to turn off Melissa's video?
Okay, Emma, I'm as unmuted. Emma, can you speak?
Yes, hi, can you hear me now? Can you hear me?
Barely, but go ahead.
Yeah, a little bit.
Okay, I was just going to say that what Rachel
I can't hear anything.
Said really hit, hit the nail on the head, this is exactly what I was thinking, my feelings were identical to that, and I was really hoping that, you know, you would take that into consideration, allowing a choice for the high schoolers. I mean, I know somebody had mentioned earlier that they really, they weren't sure the teachers were providing the level of attention that they should be, or honest in their work. Don't know that now, how are we going to know, how are we going to know that, and allow us to go back to the regular grading? What will change that? That's all.
It said she was done, Nick.
It was, I, I didn't catch a lot of it, it was hard to hear a lot of that. Okay, is there anybody else? Okay, that will take us to the consent agenda. Consent agenda provides for more efficient use of time. Any board member can remove a consent agenda item to be discussed and voted on individually. First up is finance and audit.
Sure, we have a motion to approve the finance agenda items that are on the agenda items A through L. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. I just wanted to read the donations, that we have some funding from Riverside Alumni Association and from RLEA for the 2020 senior yard signs, and we have some funds from Lou Vresol for Project Hope, so thank you for those. And again, I just want to make mention of the fact that most of the things that are on this agenda are, were discussed at the finance committee meeting.
Also wanted to mention, the student council also chipped in towards the, towards the senior signs, but we don't, we're approved that because it's an internal account, but I wanted to make sure that they got that recognition as well.
If I just missed it, but our, our L E A also provided yard signs, maybe you said that, I just missed it.
Yes.
Is there any, or discussion on any of these items, A through L? If not, Mr. Placko, can you call the roll, please?
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Belinda Grassi.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Lori Korniski.
Aye.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right, moving on, we have item N on the, on the finance agenda item, which is the donation of personal protective equipment. This is a resolution authorizing the superintendent and treasurer to donate any personal protective equipment to healthcare workers and first responders. Do I have a second for that?
A second.
Do we have any discussion on this item? I'm just going to publicly, like, I had asked for this item to be taken off of the consent agenda, simply because I, I don't want to appear heartless, and so, I wanted to be able to vote my conscience on this, and the industry that I work in personally, I, I am in an industry where we are trying to purchase personal protective equipment, and in the fact that we really don't know what's going to be happening in schools come fall, I just wanted to make sure that we have the items that we have available to us, that we're not giving away, and so I just asked that it be removed, so we can vote on it individually. So, if we, if nobody has any conversation on this, we can call the roll.
All right, Belinda Grassi.
Nay.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Lori Korniski.
Aye.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye. Motion carried. Personnel.
Yes, we have, hold on, I've got to scroll here, I've got a computer on behind my Chromebook here. We have a motion to approve the items listed on the personnel consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent, items A through E.
A second.
Do we have any discussion on these items? All right, well, and if not, Mr. Placko, can you call the roll?
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Lori Korniski.
Aye.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Belinda Grassi.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Are you reading each one of these items next, I'm sorry, separately, because they are still personnel items, or these one set of consent agenda items for A, for A, B, and C?
It, it's one separate consent item for the three items, so, so item D is to approve items A through C, I just want to point out that these were separated out, the reason this is separated out was because we moved the Assistant Athletic Director position from the administrative handbook to the, the handbook where it should belong, and because of an Ohio Ethics Commission ruling from earlier this calendar year for unrelated district, with Mrs. Harden being a volunteer coach, she has to abstain from anything that might directly affect the athletic department, and because we made this as part of the handbook change, we had to separate it out, so she has the opportunity to abstain from that.
Okay, thank you. We had, just for the record, we did talk about these items, so we have a motion to approve the items listed on the employee handbook changes consent agenda, as recommended by the superintendent, items A through C.
Second.
Second, thank you. And again, these were discussed, the changes to the personnel handbook were, or discussed at the Personnel and Finance Committee meeting without issue and, at that time. Do we have any discussion on these items? Not, can we call the roll?
Lori Korniski.
Aye.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Abstain.
Belinda Grassi.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Motion carried. Curriculum and programming.
Okay, motion to approve the items listed in the curriculum and programming consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent, item A.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, Gary, if you tell, or do the roll, please.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Belinda Grassi.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Lori Korniski.
Aye.
Motion carried. Buildings and grounds operations.
Motion to approve the items listed on the buildings and grounds consent agenda, items A through G, as recommended by the superintendent. May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
One thing we might want to point out, I just noticed that, I think in both resolutions, they've referred to Concord and Madison.
Yeah, that's to be consistent with how they've worded from the beginning of the construction project, Concord being Parkside and Madison being Riverview.
Any, any discussion on the items in the buildings and grounds portion?
I was just curious, how long do we continue to expect to see change orders coming in?
There shouldn't be too many more outstanding, just, a couple of things on here was the, the bicycle loops were something that was removed during the value engineering thing, and then once we opened the buildings, realized that we probably shouldn't have removed those, so that was an additional item requested. Electrical revisions are on here, because they need done in order to install the kiln, which was part of an allowance, and the contract was really signed, but the architect did not have the proper electrical outlet installed for the kilns to those to be installed, so that's how that changer came about. And then the other change orders for the bulkhead was work that was actually done back in August of last year, that the construction manager just didn't get us the final placing on, we made a revision to the layout of the ceiling in the one section. So, as far as I know, the only outstanding changes that I can think of off the top of the head was there's still a discussion about fencing around the retention fund at, at the Parkside location, and whether or not we put in a guardrail over there. There is another one outstanding for the staircases, there's like a flat area of, kind of like, not really a railing, but putting a railing on top of the wall that's there to make sure kids can't sit on top of it, fall off the stairs, or slide down the, the handrail area of the steps, and there's a changer out there to add a bar on there to, to prevent that. I think as far, that's the only thing I can think of at this time, hopefully we wrap up those in the near future.
And this, Buildings and Grounds change, I'm sorry, consent agenda includes all the revised, all the policies that we have reviewed at the last two policy meetings, correct?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. And yeah, we will have another set coming soon.
Yeah.
Happy day.
All right, any other discussion?
No, thank you.
All right, Mr. Placko, can you call the roll, please?
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Belinda Grassi.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Lori Korniski.
Aye.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Motion carried. With that, that takes us to the Board of Education update, if anyone has anything.
I would just like to give a big shout out to our food service department, who's been providing all those meals, that's got, that's, that's a lot of meals to be providing on a daily basis, which probably almost even rivals the amount of food that we provide on a daily basis when kids are in school, so thanks to Michelle Gifford and her team.
Yeah, I would also like to add to, and I know we've said it before, but thanking our teachers and our administrators, I know that we're going through a really different time, and I've sat in on a lot of my kids' classes, sometimes just because we happen to be in the same room, or sometimes on purpose to catch and see what my kids are actually doing or not doing, but, you know, there's some teachers that are really doing a fabulous job engaging, engaging the kids, and, you know, we appreciate very much all the hard work and dedication and everything they're doing to help our kids through this time.
Yeah, and, and I just want to echo that as well with regard to the administrators and the teachers, but I also want to recognize, I, this is a, really a crazy time, and, and things are, we need to be flexible and what have you, but I know that, that the change, the change in how school teaching is being delivered has impacted people to a, to a large extent in many homes, and I just hope everybody's doing, doing well, and we really, we will keep focused, that, that we will get back to some normalcy quickly, it may not be this year, but hopefully in the fall, we will get to the point where we have a regular school year in process, and we can get back to, to normal, but certainly appreciate everybody's flexibility, and, and I just keep thinking about everybody at home, and hoping that everybody's well. So, thank you.
Thank you. And with that, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn to executive session at 8:25 PM for personnel matters, appointment in or employment compensation, purchase or sale of property, and negotiations, if I can have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you. If there is no discussion, call the roll, please.
Belinda Grassi.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Lori Korniski.
Aye.
Jennifer, or Jack Miley.
Aye.
Aye. All right, that was that motion adjourned, or meeting adjourned, board members, please remember and administrators, and we will